Good evening. I would like to thank you all for joining me today. I am Jaisa Page and the Chair of the Education Committee for the City of Columbus. And we're going to have a public hearing to discuss the 2015-2016 Early Start Columbus Initiative. And the Education Department is headed by Director Johnson. She has a wonderful staff. And I would like to go ahead and give the floor over to her to begin to discuss the Education Department and the Early Start Columbus Initiative.
Good evening, Chair Page. Thank you for holding this hearing to discuss the efforts we are making towards our goal of universal access to high-quality pre-kindergarten for every four-year-old in Columbus. Thanks to the investment made by Mayor Coleman and this council in 2015, more of our economically disadvantaged children are prepared to enter kindergarten ready to learn. In 2012, Mayor Coleman and Council President Gunther convened the Columbus Education Commission to address community concerns regarding public education. The commission was charged with examining the challenges facing all students living within the Columbus City Schools' boundaries and resulted in 55 recommendations prioritized into seven categories. A main priority of the report was to provide universal access to high-quality preschool for every four-year-old so that they enter kindergarten ready to learn. Soon after the commission completed its work, the mayor announced in his 2014 State of the City address that he would invest $5 million in 2014 to jump-start the pre-kindergarten expansion with an initiative called Early Start Columbus and rallied for collaboration and support from public and private partnerships. The mayor and the commission believed that an investment in early childhood education will prevent achievement gaps, reduce the need for special education, increase the likelihood of healthier lifestyles, lower the crime rate, and reduce overall social costs. Research shows that for every $1 spent on high-quality preschool education, $7 to $10 are saved on requisite interventions. Expanding access to high-quality early childhood education is among the smartest investments that we can make. Columbus children will improve their readiness for kindergarten and accelerate their learning and academic performance beyond kindergarten to reading on grade level by third grade and graduating from high school. Chair Page, I would like to introduce Courtney Johnson, a parent whose child has been attending the South Side Development Center. The South Side Development Center is a five-star rated program that is seeking your consideration for funding for the 2015-16 grant year for Early Start Columbus.
Thank you, Director Johnson. And Courtney Johnson, if you could please come to the podium. Could you please state your name and the organization you are representing?
My name is Courtney Johnson and I am representing the South Side Development Center on Reeve Avenue. I'm here as a parent just speaking on behalf of my child and with how the program has impacted him, has impacted my family. But I would like to start by thanking you guys for the funding for the 2014-2015 school year. And even though my son will be moving on to kindergarten, I would highly recommend that you guys continue on with the funding for the 2015-2016 school year. Through my own personal experiences, he was initially placed in a private school where we were paying $900 a month at the beginning of the school year where he was not receiving any type of really proper curriculum to assist him with being prepared for kindergarten next year. And someone recommended the program to me, me being a single mother, you know, just trying to get by with that and struggling, you know, trying to make ends meet, thinking I was putting him in a better school that would properly prepare him. And once I placed him into the South Side Learning Development Center, he's right on track for kindergarten. He wasn't reading anything. When I moved him into the program in November of 2014, he couldn't read any words. Now he's at 70 sight words that he's reading this year with his center and, you know, with instruction and help with me as well. I am a teacher within the Columbus City School District and I'm proud to say that he will be entering my school next year for kindergarten. And I know that he will be totally prepared because of the opportunity that he was given this year with that funding. You know, even though it helps parents like myself, working-class families that, you know, just want to provide a better opportunity for our kids and even me working within the Columbus City School District, knowing that that tradition of great education will continue on with me being a product of the district as well as, you know, wanting to place him there as well. So I highly hope you guys consider continuing on with the funding. Like I said, it has helped my son tremendously with his confidence. He's excited about school. He's excited about learning. He's, you know, you know, reading words and math and things like that. Once he's actually getting it, it's not frustrating for him anymore because he doesn't know, you know, and I owe it all to the program. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. And if you don't mind, I have a few questions for you.
Oh, yes.
And I would first like to thank you for understanding the importance of education, not only being a teacher in Columbus City Schools, but also finding adequate educational opportunities for your son.
Yes.
What school do you teach at?
I teach at Indianola Informal K through 8, so I teach K through 8th graders.
Awesome. And your son will be attending Indianola?
Yes, he will be attending Indianola for the 2015-2016 school year.
And how were you able to kind of tell that he's on par for kindergarten?
Well, speaking with teachers within my school, I guess I have an awesome opportunity being within the school system, working with kindergarten teachers. And they have also helped me and provided me with some materials that can assist him with being prepared for next year and as well as the sight words. And, you know, I've showed them the list that he has and they're like, yeah, this is great because we have kids that are struggling just to read a few words, you know, or even write their name. You know, he's writing his entire name. He can tell you his birthday, his address, his phone number, and I didn't even teach him that, you know. He learned that at the center. You know, I'm coming home like, how do you, you know? So it's been a really awesome experience. And just talking to other colleagues at my school have assisted with that, so yeah.
Great. And how large was his class at the South Side Development Center?
The students within his actual class, I believe there were seven.
Okay, great. And was this a full day or half-day kindergarten?
Kindergarten or pre-K.
I'm sorry, pre-K.
Pre-K, he's there all day.
And kind of what are the benefits you found for it being a full day?
With me, I, like I said, I work full-time and also I coach extracurricular activities after school. So for a parent like me who has to be at school at, you know, 8:00, 8:15, you know, I do breakfast duty in the morning and then I coach high school sports, I'm not getting done until 5:00, 5:30. So it's very helpful. I don't have to worry about, you know, trying to rush to pick him up or having someone get him for me or worrying about that school-after-school care to pay additional because I know a lot of parents have to send their kids to school as well as pay for additional before and after care. So it's definitely been helpful for me as a full-time single mom working, yeah.
And can you talk briefly about the teacher engagement at South Side Development Center?
Oh, the teacher engagement, I feel like is very appropriate. Actually, since I am a teacher, we got out of school that Friday, that Monday, I was in his class just to see, you know, just being a fly on the wall. And I like the fact that it's small class sizes so the teacher can really reach each student and spend the necessary amount of time with each student individually. So if they have an issue or they have a problem, it's not like, you know, the instructors have a lot of students to work with. So they ask you about your day. You know, my son, he likes to talk, so he'll tell you about everything that's going on. But, you know, she'll ask him about his day, about his weekend. They'll do things to, you know, what did we do last week? And, you know, they'll re-track and reflect about things that they did previously to help them with future learning. And so it's, I feel like it's really been an awesome experience for him. You know, she's very personable. She really gets to know the kids rather than just, you know, a teacher-student, you know, relationship, so.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. And again, I thank you for coming down today and for sharing your experiences with our Early Start Columbus Initiative. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Director Johnson?
Thank you. While our main focus is to ensure all children are kindergarten-ready, Early Start Columbus helps our communities by strengthening families like the Johnsons. We know the cost of quality pre-kindergarten education can be hard on families. The investment we make in our children help to bring equity and opportunities for families to place them on a path to success. At this time, I'd like to yield the floor to Hosanna Tekia, our Education Policy Advisor.
Thank you. Hosanna?
Good evening, Councilmember Page. The reasons for investing in early childhood educations are numerous and interrelated. We have chosen high-targeted neighborhoods to invest these dollars in, one of them being the South Side. The South Side of Columbus is a beloved neighborhood that is a community on the rise. The recent investments made by the city in the Southern Gateway, the new Reeve Center, the Maloney Center, and the Better Outcomes Infant Morality Initiative are all strategic developments to help bring back the South Side to its former renaissance. The Department of Education has also strategically invested, and we have a letter from a parent from the South Side Development Center that was unable to join us but wanted to voice their thanks for the program and for your consideration. I will continue, I will read it now. "To whom it may concern, I am writing to tell you how much the Early Start Columbus program has meant to my family. We have three children in need of care, one in preschool and two in latchkey. We are not sure how we could afford to keep our preschooler in a program that was affordable and quality. We were considering finding a babysitter where unfortunately she would not have the educational quality that she has had throughout Early Start Columbus. I can say that my daughter has bloomed this year through this program. She has learned almost all of her letters and sound and has started to sound out words to spell. She has been able to learn math and is an excellent reimer. Without this program, I do not feel that she would be ready for kindergarten. I am so grateful for this program and cannot express my gratitude enough. Thank you, the Branch Family from the South Side Learning and Development Center." At this time, I would like to-
If I may, ask you a few questions. You talked about the targeted areas. Could you let us know what all of those areas are and just briefly discuss how those were chosen?
Those areas were chosen based on the life expectancy of the area, high school graduation, the kindergartner readiness assessment scores. And they were through, they were on the north, south, east, and west sides of our town. So they're broken down by ZIP codes and I'd be more than happy to provide that information to you.
Thank you. Do we have another witness?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to invite Melissa Anderson Johnson from Starting Point Learning Center to share her insight on Early Start Columbus.
Thank you, Hosanna. And thank you, Ms. Melissa Anderson Johnson. If you can, come and state your name, the organization you're representing, and then share your testimony.
Okay. My name is Melissa Johnson and I'm the Center Manager of Starting Point Learning Center. I'm sure, I don't speak for myself when I say thank you to the city for the investment that they've made in early childhood development for disadvantaged four-year-old children. Our school is located on the south side of Columbus in the Marion Franklin area. Starting Point has received and maintained five-star Step Up to Quality rating and also is accredited through the National Association of Education for young children. Through the city's efforts, we were able to open up additional classrooms to serve more children in our community. Our past year's school year, our educational team has been eyewitness to the growth and development of not only the children that participated in Early Start, but also their families. We found that through parent education and their involvement in their child's learning, they too became excited about education. The families that participated wouldn't have had that opportunity for their children because they weren't unable to qualify for traditional childcare or they were unable to attend the preschool program of their chosen Columbus City School. So each child that attended our program, they were assessed year-round. They were also screened throughout the year. And all of this is aligned with quality programs through Step Up to Quality, too. The standards that we used are aligned to higher learning content standards to make sure that they were, they were meeting goals as outlined through that assessment. So what the teachers did is that they identified where children were, needed help, and they developed lessons to help them reach those standards and those goals. And we were happy to see an average of eighty, an average of 86% improvement in children's literacy and math skills from fall to spring. And another screening will be conducted at the end of the summer. We're confident that our averages will continue to increase. We are all aware that the research shows that the most brain development happens from birth to five years old. And I truly believe that Early Start Initiative is moving in the right direction to support what we already know. And that is that all children need quality education early to be successful in life. So on behalf of my community, I want to thank the city again for their investment in our future, which is our children. And it has been and will continue to be an honor to work closely with the city if the funds continue. And I just want to make a promise that I will do everything I can to support the Early Start program.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson Johnson. And I have a few questions for you, if that's okay. Can you talk numbers? How many kids you were able to serve once you received the grant from the City of Columbus?
Okay, on average, we had 15 children at a time.
So that was the additional 15 with the grant money from the city?
Yes, additional 15, yes.
And are they primarily from the Marion Franklin area?
Yes. We partner with the Columbus City School in our area to make sure those children were able to enter kindergarten and meet their teachers and principal and everything like that.
And what school, elementary school are they typically going to?
Watkins.
Watkins Elementary?
Mm-hmm.
Could you talk briefly about the five-star rating?
Okay, so Step Up to Quality is a five, it's a five-star rating system. So in order to achieve five stars, you have to earn points for that. And it's all based on your teacher qualifications, your curriculum, your assessments, your parent involvement. And so at our center, all of our teachers have, our preschool teachers all have a bachelor's degree in early child development. So they're prepared and they have 20 hours of training that they have to do a year to make sure that they stay up to date on the most current practices to help children strive.
And is that rating awarded by the state of Ohio?
By the state of Ohio, yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming down to testify.
Thank you again.
And thank you for the work you're doing on the South Side.
Thank you, Chair Page, and thank you, Melissa. As Hosanna pointed out, using census data and kindergarten readiness assessment scores, our department began to strategically determine funding priorities to serve children with the highest needs. Based on provider and stakeholder feedback, our department made several adjustments to last year's progress, process that is designed to better meet the needs of our community and to create greater efficiencies in the delivery of services. One of the most important changes we are making is to align our program requirements with the standards that have been established by the state of Ohio or by the National Early Learning Association. Using established guidelines already familiar to early childhood providers serves as a proxy to ensure high-quality education and cuts down on administrative burden for both the providers and the city. The state's quality rating system known as Step Up to Quality helps to make sure all students have access to a high-quality early learning experience. The development of these standards represented collaboration among state agencies serving young children, including the Ohio Department of Education, the Ohio Department of Jobs and Family Services, the Ohio Department of Health, the Ohio Department of Mental Health, the Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities, and the Governor's Office of Health Transformation. State agencies worked with national experts and writing teams made up of Ohio-based content experts and stakeholders to revise and expand the standards. The Step Up to Quality rating includes holistic family, community, and health promotion standards, all following the spirit of the New Compact for Educational Excellence in the City of Columbus. To that end, Early Start Columbus will only award grants to providers that are accredited by the National Association for the Education of Young Children or those that have been rated at least a three out of five stars on Ohio's quality rating system. Chair Page, at this time, I would like to turn the floor over to Kathy Neal-Surrellis, a teacher from the YMCA, to talk about the growth she has seen in the students in her classroom housed at Columbus Fairwood Elementary School.
Thank you, Director Johnson, and thank you, Ms. Kathy Neal-Surrellis, for coming down today. I asked that you would state your name again and the organization you are representing.
My name is Kathy Neal-Surrellis. I'm the lead teacher and administrator for the YMCA Early Start Program in Columbus City Schools' Fairwood Elementary School. And I'm excited about the opportunity to be involved with the YMCA, Columbus City Schools, and the City of Columbus in this partnership to provide pre-k, pre-kindergarten education for our local children here in Columbus. Together, we are building a framework for learning and supporting children's future. My passion, my gift, is teaching and learning along with children ages four and five. Myself being a mother of a child born late in the summer, I've been really on top of this. I value the work and I have been gratefully blessed with the opportunity to change the lives of the children and parents in meaningful ways. I take responsibility in preparing and equipping the parents with skills and resource to assist in their child's school experience. In my experience with this program, my parents have benefited greatly from this program. Most of my parents are working parents or they're in school. So they, they're really involved in the classroom. If we need anything, they're willing to do that. They support us in all of our after-school activities. So we have a really strong parent involvement. So my goals have been to assist and facilitate and guide the development of my students in mastering the required state standards and core competencies needed for a successful start in kindergarten. We at the YMCA believe in youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. And we provide age-appropriate learning activities through play while building self-confidence and individualized assessments and screening to document progress or needed intervention, interventions, and the mastery of skills. We are giving our students, by being in Fairwood, a hands-on experience of being in a school population because they're among the population, they're going through the routines and the procedures in a school building, so it lessens their fear once they start kindergarten. At Fairwood, we had our full capacity of 20 students by December the 13th. We've given them six assessments, pre- and post-tests in math and literacy from the Ready to Read program. They've had Denver screenings and we use creative curriculum, so that's an ongoing process of following the children to develop. Once the Early Childhood Resource Network came in and did the Denver screening, four of my children needed glasses and they got their glasses. One made us nervous at naptime because she has sleep apnea and we connected her being obese to a nutrition specialist, so she's lost some weight. Her parents have put her in dance class because she likes to dance. We had one who failed a hearing test, but that day that child had an ear infection. So we were able to track that. And we had one student who came to our Parent Resource Fair and turned out he had high blood pressure. So the nurse would come in, the school nurse from Fairwood, and check his blood pressure three times a week, and the parents followed up. We have a lot of collaborations with the pre-K class already in Fairwood with Columbus City Schools. We shared in a co-site night. We've shared four field trips. We've had two classroom visits from a dental hygienist and the smokehouse from the fire department. And then we also, my assistant and I, attend the Columbus City Schools' professional development for early childhood in the pre-K. School-wide, we have participation in the Columbus City Schools' bulk breakfast and lunch program, so we make sure the kids are fed and ready to learn. The music teacher included us in a weekly music class and we've performed twice in a school-wide. We've participated in the two-parent conferences, a math and science night, a family literacy night, a father-and-daughter dance, a mother-and-son dance, and then the resource fair. At the resource fair, my goal was to get my parents who have siblings in the school to continue their children in our program because our program ends in July, it goes through the summer. And so I went out into the community and connected with Mount Olivet Baptist Church and their siblings, their program aligns with ours, so their siblings can go to this program through the summer for free for the parents. And that's it. You're doing wonderful things.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, you are doing wonderful things. I have just a few questions for you. How long has your program been housed in Fairwood Elementary?
I started the day after Labor Day in September of 14. My children came September the 22nd, so this is our first year.
Okay. Awesome. Well, you're doing a lot of great things for it to be your first year. And just briefly, how long have you been working with pre-K children, I guess, in this area?
In this area, recently it's been five years, but I worked almost 25 years in early childhood with Columbus Public Schools.
And can you talk about why you think having, in addition to the pre-K program at Fairwood, having your program is something that the city needs to continue with?
Because the Columbus City Schools' pre-K can only take so many children, so we got a lot of referrals from their overflow list. And with this program, the children don't have to be in the ZIP code. So I have parents from Berwick, I have parents from up north who, we have no transportation, but they bring their children every day and pick up their children every day. So there's always an overflow. Sometimes parents are late in getting them registered or their shots. So it made it sense to have our program in that school because we were able to get the overflow.
Great. Well, thank you so much for your dedication to the young people here in our city and for the work you've been doing for the past 25 years to educate them. So thank you and thanks for coming down. Director Johnson?
Thank you, Chair Page. This type of collaboration between community providers and Columbus City Schools is the right step for our children in this community. Classrooms like the one located at Fairwood Elementary School help to meet the needs of children living in high-needs areas. We know that research has shown that the early years in a child's life, when the human brain is forming, represent a critically important window of opportunity to develop a child's full potential and to shape key academic, social, and cognitive skills that determine a child's success in school and in life. On March 4th, the department announced a new grant process for Early Start Columbus and accepted provider applications online until Monday, March 30th at 5:00 p.m. On March 11th, we held a technical assistance meeting at the Jerry Hammond Center for all providers who were interested in applying. The grant information was sent to current providers, posted on the website, and shared with the early learning stakeholders throughout our community. After the applications were received, the department convened a grant committee who met and reviewed each application. The grant committee included staff from the Development Department, Columbus Public Health, Franklin County, former teachers and administrators, and early learning stakeholders. The Education Department supports the grant committee's recommendation of the following high-quality pre-kindergarten programs. Columbus Early Learning Centers, Creative Child Care, Glen Community House, Haynes School Incorporated, DBA Academy of Reynoldsburg, Heavenly Kids Center for Learning, Maze Manor Preschool, NCBC Human Services Corporation Kids Care Academy, South Side Learning and Development Center, Starting Point Learning Center, YMCA, CDC, Brightside Academy Incorporated, Harrisburg Pike, and the Ohio State University. This work could not be done without the support of our community, the mayor, and this council. And we ask for your consideration for Early Start Columbus scheduled in upcoming legislation. At this time, I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Director Johnson and Hosanna for coming today, and other members of your staff. I just have a few questions. How much money will be awarded through the grants for the 2015-2016 school year?
This year, we will be awarding $4.3 million in grants.
And how does this compare to last year?
Last year, we actually had $5 million, but with budget- Last year, we actually had five million dollars, but with budget changes and changes in our staff, we have less available, but we're still going to be able to serve the same number of kids with some of the efficiencies that we've created as a result of some changes that we've made. So we're going to be able to serve five hundred students again this year.
Very good. Thank you. And briefly, could you just say how many applicants applied, and then just the number of how many grants are going to be awarded out of the total number?
Altogether, there are about thirteen applicant, thirty-one applicants, I'm sorry, and thirteen were awarded by the grant committee.
And are, for the pre-k, are majority of them full-day pre-kers or is it half-day?
Chair Page, all of the programs that we provide funding for will be full-day programs. Most of them are full-year programs as well, but some of our providers provide school-year programs.
Well, thank you both very much. I don't have any further questions for you. And it's my understanding that we do not have any additional speakers this evening, so we will close up this hearing. Again, I would like to thank everyone in attendance. I know that we have other educational providers who are here today, and I thank you all for the work that you're doing. It's very important that we continue working to make sure all of our four-year-olds are ready for kindergarten. And I'm very excited about this department, excited about the work that's being done. And Director Johnson, I thank you for your leadership. I thank you for the hard work and efforts of your staff to continue to make sure that this program is functioning and that we are doing what we can for the young people in our city. To the viewing and listening audience, I ask that you also go online and to learn more about the Early Start Initiative and to come on Monday when we will vote on this legislation. Thank you so much.